Oh yes, oh yes, this Montgomery County Board of Commissioners is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God save the state and its humble Board of Commissioners.
Please follow me in the pledge to act white. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'll ask our chaplain, Joe Fried, to please make his vocation.
Let us pray. We thank you to your God for another day and we thank you to this legislative body and their willingness to serve as citizens of Montgomery County. We pray for wisdom and guidance tonight as we go over these resolutions and other decisions made that we might make the right decision. And whenever our views differ, we just pray that we respect one another. We pray for military that are away and separated from their families. We just pray that this time will soon pass that they might be back together. Pray for their safety and safe return. We thank you for our dedicated county employees and the service they render to the citizens of Montgomery County. In the name of God, Christ, and Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Thank you. Commissioners, if you will, please register your attendance. I'll ask the clerk to please announce the attendance.
We have 20 present and one answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, you have the minutes in front of you for a previous meeting, May 12, 2008. Hope you've had an opportunity to look over those and see if you have any changes or corrections. If not, I entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Bryant. Do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Brodman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's proposed, like so. Okay, the minutes stand clear. Thank you. All right, tonight we have before us the zoning resolutions. We have CZO-1-2008, Montgomery County Tennessee Text Amendment relative to residential cluster developments. I believe if you notice, you had a handout on your desk when you came in tonight. It was relative to the cluster option resolution. If you will take a look at that, it starts out with Section 21. And there are some spaced pages, and this is the same identical handout that you received at last week's meeting, but the sheet is paper clipped to that, the single sheet that has some red print on it. These are the requested changes and clarifications that came forward at the June 2 meeting. They've just been reported on this sheet to try to make it easier for us to understand. If you want to look over those, it says procedure for approval, page two, the letter C, development requirements add the word exceeding between the words two and 35. Do you see that? Any questions about that change? All right, the second change, lot requirements, and I think this is the one there was a lot of conversation on. The R1 single was 10-foot minimum on both sides, and the R1A was also 10-foot minimum on both sides. That was another suggested change. The third change is fire protection requirements. That's on page four of the handout. And that says remove all language in number 28 and replace with fire hydrants will be required as specified within the Clarksville, Montgomery County subdivision regulations. All right, the fourth, the following illegal requirements for operation and maintenance is on page six of the handout, number one lowercase d. After the word incorporated, add the following language, quotation marks, and shall remain active permanently. Should be quotation marks. Close there, I'm not sure if that's written in or not. Okay? Give that a minute to digest that. I'll entertain a motion to amend, Commissioner Bannister. Will you have the first?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion to amend.
Okay. Commissioner Bannister makes the motion to amend this resolution with the changes on the single sheet handout. Commissioner Rankin?
Do we have to have the motion to approve it on the floor and then amend it?
I suppose we would have to. Okay, so let's back up in. Commissioner Bannister, do you think that is a motion to bring it to the floor?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Rankin, if you want to make the second on that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and now we need the amendment. Okay, Commissioner Bannister wants to make a motion to amend it by adding the changes that you presented with tonight. Okay? Commissioner Bannister.
If I have a question regarding one of the last page of the amendment. It seems to be on the floor, is why I asked the question. Or is number four very special?
Well, we have a motion on the amendment right now on the floor. We need a second for that before we have any discussion. You will make the second on it. Okay, Mr. Bryant makes the second on the amendment now, discussion.
My question is to David, on the fire protection on page four.
I'll just wait. Mr. Riggins, you want to come forward, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I guess I just need some clarification on each subdivision regulation could be different on this fire protection, so it could still average between 3 and 800 feet?
No, ma'am, it's pretty clear in the subdivision regulations which distances apply to where.
Okay.
And I've got a copy if you'd like to hear those. But I thought by taking the language that we had in there out and putting this in there, that it's just, it makes it much smoother, non-different in each document.
Okay, can you cut in and then tell me so I have an idea?
This is a paragraph in the subdivision regulations. It says all fire hydrants shall be located on a minimum of 6-inch waterline. Fire hydrants located within a single-family residential district shall be spaced no more than 800 feet apart. That's been standard for many years, as measured along the street grid. Fire hydrants placed within a multi-family commercial or industrial district shall be spaced no more than 300 feet apart. That's where the 300 came from last time. There should be no fire hydrants installed located more than 300 feet from a dead end of a cul-de-sac. That's no matter what the zone is. So that's where the 300 to 800 range came from last time. It was a little confusing.
So either R1 and R1A and cluster, they could be 800 feet apart?
They could be. Many times, though, in the last sentence in this paragraph, it says all fire hydrant locations shall be approved by the Clarksville Fire Department or the Montgomery County Emergency Management Agency. Several times when we had cluster developments come in, one of these two agencies had recommended closer spacing, and they've been required to put in there. Just depends on the layout, the street grid, and the distance. Sometimes they will recommend closer than 800, and we require those wherever they say they need to be.
So they will be approved by one of the two entities, you know, city or county. There will be a fire inspection to determine that.
That's right.
That's part of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bannister?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment to this amendment. Section C, number 14, request that be left at 10-foot minimum on both R1 and R1As.
That's part of the motion.
Okay, will you go to that one more time so I can get that?
It's already part of it.
It's already, okay, that was part of it.
Okay. In that last page, it would go.
That should be number two.
Number two.
The purpose of number two, because I know that was discussed about each other. So if you choose to adopt amendment number two, it states 10-foot. Yes, ma'am.
So we don't need to look at the amendment? Okay. All right?
Right.
All right, let's see. Mr. Bannister?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is on number four, on the requested changes. It says in section 1D, after the word incorporated. I don't see the word incorporated in 1D. I was wondering if that's supposed to be 1C, the short little statement, the homeowners association shall be incorporated, and then insert the language, shall remain active permanently.
Yes, it should be.
And then the follow-up question is, if that's stating, this is to Mr. Riggins and/or Mr. Piddy, if 1C states that it shall remain active permanently in one huge paragraph in 1D about what happens if it dissolves, and how it could be reo'd and things like that?
I'll go with that. Please jump in. You may require, for instance, this is a real life example, there was a homeowners association established in one of the North Park subdivisions. It was a requirement that that homeowners association be established and be in operation and maintain the open space. That homeownership arrangement failed for several years. Somebody still had to maintain those areas. They were being left to grow up, they needed cutting. And if this part wasn't in there, that's a safeguard, so that if something does happen, hopefully it won't, but if it does happen, the county has the authority to go order those improvements made, or those cleanups, or those grass cuttings, and actually put a lien on the lot owners' property taxes. You know, they'll get it back in property tax, and also there's going to be a lien on the deed. So that in itself, hopefully, will, you know, they keep getting hit with those things, hopefully they'll, you know, do what they need to and keep those associations active.
Thank you.
Do I agree with your public?
As you're referring to North Park, it's North Parksville, yeah, we had that situation on, the call with delinquent taxes. There's really no way legally we can force them to remain in association, and we can't pull a gun to their head. So that's why this additional number four, where D is in there, so in the event that does happen, it'll be passed on to the main property owners at the time.
Thank you.
Commissioner King?
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. David also. I'll give the 10-foot on 1C on both sides will have any effect on C30 about the sprinkler system.
Also, that clause is currently in there and it won't change.
No, that's changed. It's a fact.
No.
All right, Commissioner Bryant?
Negative, section D is said also to approve any amendment of the injection wells, too. Section D on page 10, we're talking about homeowners association in the event of disaster.
When you read the right way? Yes, I believe it would, because those injection wells will be required in part of the open space, right? Not necessarily, but they could be, and be a wise thing if they were included as part of the open space, then the homeowners association would maintain that open space and include that injection well. And if something ever did happen, in the event the homeowners association folded, county could award those improvements made, those repairs done, and access against the owners, all the ownership in that subdivision.
Does that need to be a part of that section? Does that need to be in the form of a motion, or is it?
I think it.
Is it too vague, or is it correct enough that you feel that legally it would cover?
With the words responsibility for maintenance of all common areas in there, I think that covers it. I think that's sufficient.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bannister?
Thank you, I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Bryant's question. So is there a language in here that requires an injection well to be on that common property, or can they put it on a single property owner's lot, which would determine that one property owner is responsible for that entire injection well, rather than it being divided amongst the homeowners association?
Well, that's a question that you've had.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, as it currently reads now, there would be the potential for that to be located on a single property owner. The, going back, this is not part of your request of changes, but the restrictions that we're trying to place on it, where we're not going to allow, you know, more than a certain percentage to be located within the required open space, in turn may contradict that at some point, so there may need to be an additional, you know, language placed in here that requires all injection wells and detention areas created by the developer to be placed underneath the open space requirements. If that is a requirement that's made on it, then there may need to be, you know, a discussion on, are we going to let that amount of property be included in the required open space for the developer?
Okay, so just to make sure I understand what you're saying, the way it's stated right now, it does not require injection wells to be in that common space, and your concern was that injection well taking up part of that 50% of the allotted 15% for open space?
That's correct.
Okay. If I wanted to insert that language in there, because injection wells are a big issue, where would it need to be inserted to close that loophole, which would require injection wells, that's not injection wells, to be part of that open space that is maintained and owned by the homeowners association?
I believe you probably can place that underneath the, best place to make the open space requirement is section to require all injection wells, you know, or and/or detention areas created by the developer to be located within the open space of the developer.
Okay, I would like to make that in the form of a motion, but I need to know exactly what the letter and what number and subsection, please.
I think it'd be simpler just to renumbering on everything from number 11 down.
Okay, so section C, are you reading section C, sir?
Yes.
You're saying open space requirements?
Section C, and then...
So we would insert a new at number 11 and renumber everything else?
Yes.
Okay, and what would that new number 11, because I'm not used to writing these things, what would it need to say to close that loophole?
You said require injection wells and all other retention areas to be part of the open space. Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what.
Is that it, Commissioner Bannister?
Yes, ma'am. You're trying to, I'm sorry.
We want to add that as a new number 11 and push everything else down? Is that correct?
Yes, I think that would be the best situation, I would just add a number 11. The only thing I would, is by specifically listing out detention area.
Are you saying detention or retention?
Detention, retention. And that, the point I was actually trying to make is, we may need to look and cover all of the specific burdens that can be used for unique things that can be placed in there to make sure that this item will cover them all. If we simply say injection well, there could be a possible area that you would want to be maintained by the open space that would not be an injection well. And if we start listing those specifically, I think it would be best to have a comprehensive list.
Okay, so if you're hearing correctly, you're saying that you, to make sure we cover all bases and close the loophole, you need to do a little bit more research to make sure all the language is in there? Mr. Riggins, is it?
Try this phrase on.
Okay.
It would be a new section which would state all injection wells, major drainage structures, detention slash retention areas shall be included in required open space.
All right. I would like to make that in the form of an amendment to...
Okay, hold on. We have an amendment on the floor already. Now, is this going to be another amendment, or an amendment to be amended? It looks like it needs to be another amendment to make.
Okay, so I should hold off and then vote this amendment, and then come back with this?
We need to vote on the First Amendment, which is adding these changes on the sheet that we get. So that's the First Amendment to the resolution.
And I'll come back to this next time. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So if y'all want to just stay here a minute, we'll come back, please. Okay, so are we ready to vote on the amendment to the resolution that was presented?
Yes.
Okay, and the amendment is to add these changes. That's what we're going on, whether to add these changes. Then he's going to do another amendment a little bit after we get through the facts, those of that, to address the other issues we've been discussing. Is everybody clear? Here's my, all right, we're voting on, we'll see, I still have some other questions. You can go ahead and take your questions before we come back.
I'd like to weigh in on questions. Just go to the questions.
Okay, thanks. All right, so let's take a vote then on the amendment to the resolution, to make the changes on the handout sheet. Commissioners, if you will, please cast your votes on the amendment to the resolution. I'll ask the clerk to please tally the votes. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Clerk, please tally the votes.
We have 18 ayes, no resentions, and two noes.
Okay, the amendment passes. All right now, the floor is open to another amendment. Okay, Commissioner Bannister?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a commitment to this to insert a new number 11 in section C under the open space requirements that will read as, Mr. Riggins, he'll read this in just a moment, and then we will need to accordingly renumber the current number 11 through 32 by increasing those each by one number subsequently.
All right, we have a motion to add restrictive information on the space concerned injection wells, injection wells. Okay, David, you got the fear with the wording. I've got other retention areas, but that is the detention?
I'm going to put both in there.
Okay. I'll give you a moment to get it down if you will.
And a little bit to this, we were just talking about, there may need to be some determination made on what's considered a major drainage structure. So we're thinking as part of a plat approval or a plat review by the building codes department, by the stormwater coordinator, that determination should be made and recommended by him. Might not need to have all of them in there, but he would be the determining factor on which ones are major enough to require it be included. So, see how this sounds. All injection wells, major drainage structures, retention and detention areas shall be included in required open space as determined by Montgomery County Stormwater Coordinator.
Okay, go with the last part there, one more time after, retention and detention areas.
Shall be included in required open space.
Okay.
As determined by Montgomery County Stormwater Coordinator.
Okay. All right, so we're going to say we're going to add a new number 11 to section C, open space requirements. We need a second on this before we get it on the floor, don't we? Okay, second there, by Commissioner Alder, thank you. Okay, so it's going to be a number 11 added to section C, open space requirements require injection wells and all other retention and detention areas, all of the retention and detention areas shall be included in required open space as determined by Montgomery County Stormwater Coordinator. So correct? Any further discussion on this? This is an amendment to a motion. Commissioner Alder?
Thank you, Mayor Bannister. Now, how does the new number 11 conflict with the old number eight? Where we're saying no more than 50% of the required open space can include these drainage structures. It seems like to me we allow number 11 in there, and we're going to cut down on the open space if we let all those injection wells be in there, and I'm not in favor of that.
What you may have to do is require more open space. It says you're required to leave a minimum of 15% open space. It doesn't mean you may have to leave more. If you incorporate all your major drainage structures in open space, and it takes up more than 50% of that 15 acres, you might have to add more open space.
I mean, is that implied in this resolution? Or do we need to say that we're not going to have less open space, they're just going to have to dedicate more land? Because it would seem to me that if we allow all this stuff in number 11 in the open space, that's going to cut down on the open space.
It could.
And I don't think that's a good idea.
If you want to clarify some of the worries at the end of number eight, clarify that and certainly put that in.
He's getting too complicated. You know, I'm worried that we're going to mess something else up. I'm just kind of not in favor of putting these injection wells in the open space, or taking up any more room of open space that I really feel like we need for these clusters.
The, just an easy example to try to walk through, if it was a 100-acre tract, it would require 15 acres that would be required to be left for open space. Number eight states that only seven and a half of those acres could be used, or could include these drainage structures. Okay, so if we had nine acres of open space that were used as drainage structures, then you would have to include actually more open space.
So you think if we leave 11 in there, it doesn't conflict with eight? It just still requires the additional open space?
I believe so, because the number eight states that no more than 50% of the required, so on 100 acres are required now, would be 15 acres. So no more than seven and a half of those acres could include these drainage structures. So if you had nine acres that were drainage structures, you would have to increase your overall open space by an acre and a half, which they can, to accommodate your 50% requirement. So I feel like that by adding 11 to there, you actually reduce the potential to require more open space.
I mean, as long as it's not cutting down our open space, I'm okay with it. Okay.
We'll make sure, I mean, they have to make number eight, so no more than 50% of your open space can be taken up by that. The wording on the dedication of open space is a minimum of 15%. So yeah, we'll make sure that there's enough open space so that no more than 50% is taken up by drainage structures and things.
And I just have one other question, and it's an easy one. Did we incorporate that change in the 1C for 1D? Did we incorporate that in our last amendment?
Okay, when you go down, 1C.
1C should have been under legal requirements for operation and maintenance. This is what Commissioner Bannister brought up. Did we incorporate that change that should be 1C instead of 1D? We did, okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, ma'am. Couple of questions, I think, if you can get me out. If this amendment passes, does that mean no individual homeowner would be responsible for an injection well, or sinkhole, or any drainage would be the homeowners association? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you were to buy a home in one of these clusters, would you be made aware of your responsibility and possible future responsibility for maintenance of an injection well or sinkhole? Would you be made aware of that at the time or before closing?
I can't answer that. We require notes that we put on the plat, notes all over the plat, drainage structures to be, or drainage easements to be shown and labeled as dimensioned on the plat. And it's clear that the maintenance responsibility is of the landowner at the time. Many times, unfortunately, that does not get passed on to the potential buyer, but we do all we can.
We've seen this in building codes, we, you know, very few people actually look at plats.
Right.
And there's nothing at closing, there's no piece of paper that that attorney says by signing these documents, you're committing to be responsible, or at least a portion of the responsibility, for this sinkhole or for this injection well. And we've seen that problem, you know, and when you have a problem with an injection well, it's not a few hundred dollars to fix it in many cases, you know, it's several thousand to correct it. I'm just concerned that this doesn't address that in any way.
It would be in the deed when they purchase the property, they reference the homeowners association agreement, and just like restrictive covenants, there could be reference to the plat reference also, I guess, if the attorney was doing his job, he would tell them that there's restrictions right here in this deed, you may need to look at those. I don't think it would be in the verbatim.
Mr. Bobards?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Page three, number seven excludes parking areas, excluding space. Parking areas definitely, where we go around.
The parking areas are not included in the, cannot be counted before you 15% of the car open space, and that's true.
Would it benefit the association to have a parking area next to the park or something of that nature that could be included in that?
I mean, I don't know why they're saying no parking areas. I mean, what are you supposed to park if you want to go to the park?
Walk.
I think the original letter is...
I would just think a parking.
It's not a big word.
I mean, it's a benefit to the association, I would imagine. If it's not, maybe I would just... If it's not, maybe I would just, I'd, uh...
I certainly understand where it could be seen as a benefit. Parking areas, uh, could be interpreted as, uh, on-street parking.
Well, I don't consider that as called a street, which is plainly defined in this.
The, uh, it could, it could be considered that, it could be a wider section of, I think the original intent is to maintain that the required fifteen percent would have to be considered an open green space area, either vegetation or, and not to include any type of, um, concrete, asphalt, things like that.
What about a basketball court, then, or something to that nature? That wouldn't be concrete, green space. Tennis courts.
This does not, this does not preclude parking areas being left, they just can't, cannot count those as part of the fifteen percent. If you think that that should be allowed, I'm concerned to take, take those three words out there.
The other question I have is on the driveways, it says they not, cannot be made out of dust and materials. What does that mean?
There's a, uh, there is a section in our zoning resolution that says any driveways, parking areas, no, I'm sorry, in general, any, uh, access, accessways, uh, parking lots have to be made out of dustless material. That's either, uh, asphalt, uh, concrete, something that doesn't produce dust when you drive over it, with neighbors, anything like that. There's no, there's no statewide requirement that private driveways have to fall into that category. But we felt like it was important, if you're gonna cluster a development and have potentially more driveways than you can normally have, that would be dust, you know, you shouldn't have a bunch of ground driveways coming out into a street area, picture sixty feet.
What if the sinkhole forms on my property, now living in clusters, that become association property now?
No, sir.
What is the definition of injection well? Probably the only one here don't know what's one is exactly, what is also?
I can, I can tell you what I think I know about it.
Okay.
It's when you have, it's when you have a visible, uh, in a sinkhole, and, and many times you're allowed to drain into those, those areas. You have to leave, you have to first calculate the area that runs off into that sinkhole. And you then figure the hundred-year flood elevation of that basin, if you were assuming that that sinkhole was flooded up, and it was not taking any water. If it were stopped up, we got a hundred-year flood, how, how, would you have to leave drainage so that people don't be able to? In addition to that, to keep those areas open, engineers are required to go in and excavate down until they find the opening in the bedrock, and, and then place a stamp height with openings down, you know, straight up to where it goes over the opening in the bedrock, backfill with chunk rock, and then smaller rock, and then finally cover it up with a grate on top. That way the water coming in there is gonna flow right back down into that sinkhole channel.
That's an injection well?
Yes, sir. Has to be permitted by the state. State Division of Water Quality has to permit it, inspect all injection wells.
All right. More questions. Commissioner Bassett.
Thank you. And, uh, Commissioner Robards, as, as the state attorney on our county, say I had an injection well on my property, I, it fails, it's tens of thousands of dollars, potentially fixed it and redid it, and, uh, I'm not sure that it's fair that one property or should bear that for the whole neighborhood, that whole neighborhood is drinking water. Um, I did have a question to follow up on Commissioner Rankin's question, just to make sure I understood. She was questioning Section Eight, and just to make sure that language is correct. All of that stuff, an injection well, a major drainage structure, detention or retention, all of those will be part of that drainage piece that bore the hundred-year flood plan? Okay, I just wanna make sure that that was, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, that brings us back to our amendment to this resolution. So the amendment that's on the floor now is to add new Section Eleven and Section Two. And that is, again, I'll try to quote it here from my notes, uh, open space requirements under that section require injection wells and all other drainage structures such as retention and detention areas shall be included in required open space as determined by Montgomery County Stormwater Coordinator. Correct?
A little bit different than what we...
Oh, okay.
Can you go through it again?
Yes, please.
Okay, a new number eleven, which would say all injection wells, major drainage structures, retention and detention areas shall be included in required open space as determined by the Stormwater Coordinator, Montgomery County Stormwater Coordinator.
Okay, God, thank you. Okay, this is the amendment we're voting on. Okay, commissioners, please cast your votes, either for or against this new number eleven filed, amendment to the resolution. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have seventy ayes or abstentions, zero noes.
Okay. The amendment to the resolution passes, so we now have passed two amendments to that resolution. Okay? Any further discussion on the resolution as amended? Okay, are you ready to vote on the amended resolution for two amendments? All right, the first amendment is to add the changes on the sheet you were given tonight, and the second one we just voted on is describing further, you know, the drainage areas and injection wells. Question, okay. Commissioner Edley?
Yes, all these changes we have made, did I not, did I not add, make an amendment defer this to thirty days and see this in the grant again?
That would just be a motion, that would be...
A motion or whatever you did.
Okay, Commissioner Edley makes the motion to defer this to thirty days throughout a second. Commissioner Bryant, seconds. Any further discussion on your way to this amended, amended resolution for thirty days? Ready for the vote? Okay, commissioners, please cast your votes on, uh, deferring this amended resolution for thirty days. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Clerk, please tally the votes.
We have nine ayes or abstentions, zero noes.
Okay. This, uh, resolution to defer for thirty days passes. All right, now we have the amended resolution back on the floor. Questions been called for.
Did this go in for a committee?
Uh, Mr. Rankin, I would imagine it had gone for the regional planning commission, had it not?
It did, and that's the only legal requirement we have.
It's gone for the regional planning commission, and they decided...
We have a residential development committee also within the...
And it, it did go, it did, did go to them also, yes.
And what was the recommendations, Mr. Rankin?
Uh, I believe they were...
Okay.
We, we had one meeting in our office with that group, and, uh, they took the initial changes we had, uh, had looked at, and I did not receive any formal comment on the meeting.
Was it a call meeting?
It was, it was an appetite meeting in our office, and I sent an notification to everyone on that committee.
So we don't know if it was approved or disapproved?
They're not, they're not required to actually approve or disapprove or make a recommendation. We are required to supply the information to them, they in turn have the right to make comments if they choose, but they're not required to take action one way or another, or to approve or formally disapprove. And we did receive no comments back.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're ready to vote. Correct? All right, we're voting on the resolution with amended twice. Commissioners, please cast your votes on the amended resolution, on the cluster resolution. It's, uh, CZO dash one dash two thousand eight. Any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have fifteen ayes or abstentions, five noes.
Amendment resolution's passed. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda this evening is CZO dash two dash two thousand eight, Montgomery County, Tennessee, text amendment, add use permitted on review in Ag agricultural district. Do I have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor? I have a motion from Commissioner Bryant and a second from Commissioner Rankin. Any further discussion on this resolution? Commissioner Rankin?
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. Uh, this is the use permitted on review that I had asked the planning commission to approve. It has to do with the wedding chapel in the Hades House, uh, for, uh, the property where the Rutherford's reside, and you'll notice on that, the CZ four, that Rutherford's have withdrawn their application for a, for a zone change, and I think that probably this use permitted on review is, is the better way to do it rather than to have that zoning in the middle of an agricultural district. And I would ask my fellow commissioners to support this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Questions been called for, we're voting on CZO dash two dash two thousand eight. So use permitted on review. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Do you have other questions, Commissioner Rankin?
No, Mayor, thanks.
Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Commissioner Robden? Okay, any commissioner like to change their vote? Clerk, please tally the votes.
We have twenty ayes or abstentions, zero noes.
Resolution passes, thank you. Okay, the next resolution we have come to vote has been withdrawn, that was the Rutherford's, uh, zoning resolution to change my ag to C two, but that's been taken care of, use permitted on review. Okay, the last one, CZ dash five dash two thousand eight, application of brandy voter from ag to E two. We have a motion to bring this resolution to the floor. Motion's made by Commissioner Skinner, seconded by Commissioner Harrison. Any discussion on this resolution? You have a question?
E two or E one?
Oh, E one, I apologize. My eyes are failing. All right, question's been called for. Commissioners, please cast your votes on resolution CZ dash five dash two thousand eight. Correct? One more. Don't fall asleep on me. Any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have twenty ayes or abstentions, zero noes.
Resolution passes, thank you. Okay, that, that's all of our zoning resolutions for the evening. Now let's move on to our other resolutions. We have, uh, zero eight dash six dash one. Do you wanna take these separately, or do you wanna try to move them all together, put them together? Okay, uh, resolution zero eight dash six dash one through zero eight dash six dash five. All our resolutions to amend the school system's budget for various funds. Do I have a motion to bring these resolutions to the floor? Motion's made by Commissioner Albert, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Any discussion on these individual resolutions? Commissioner Rankin?
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. And I don't want my fellow commissioners to get tired of you for me tonight, but I do want to add amendments, especially the ones right behind me, uh, to all, to all of these resolutions. And I know that, that sometimes you have budget overruns in certain categories, and, and, and you budgeted more than you need other categories, and you may get the money you need to move around. And, and it's true for the county general fund, too, um, but I would like to add an amendment to all these resolutions that any of these budget overruns before, be brought to the budget committee and the county commission for approval before they are incurred. So that way we don't have everything at the end of the year that hasn't gotten switched around. I, I think it's important that the overruns be looked at and approved, uh, and that it hasn't been happening. So I'm asking for an amendment to all, to, for, for one through five right now, and I'll come back and ask for another amendment for six when we get ready to vote on it. I'd like to make that a form of a motion.
All right, Commissioner Rankin's made, I guess that's an amendment to the resolution?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That adds that in the future that this amendment should come before the county commission for full vote, before the expenses are incurred.
Can you put the budget committee, too, I'm sorry, budget committee in the, in the commission?
Do I have a second, uh, seconded by Commissioner Edley? Any further discussion? Commissioner Bassett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question is, would an amendment to these, such as that of having a barrier on future proceedings, or would that need to be a policy change in how these things happen in the future?
I think, I, I would, let's have, let's have Danny Grant, his essential exponents to come forward on this. Of course, I know she's talking about the county budget amendments as well. Mr. Rankin?
Yes, I would agree. I mean, we're talking about a policy change. In fact, this, you know, this vibrant is known to us, and we probably, our first round amendments to is the first time we had this request, and we don't have a problem with that. In fact, our new financial software gives us the ability to do that, and, uh, this version I can talk about it, and our, our goal was to look at coming with forward with our budget amendments on a quarterly basis, um, if, if that meets with, you know, the board's permission to approve one thing, and we can do it in any, anyway. One, we thought that might be a, uh, more responsive way of submitting amendments, uh, if, if that meets with y'all's approval, but we thought we would try to do that on a quarterly basis, as opposed to just doing year-in, as we've historically done, you know, by knowledge.
It's probably more appropriate to make a policy change rather than amendment to these resolutions, because it could just be dead after these resolutions are passed, it could just be...
I, I understand what you're saying.
And I, I think it was supposed to be that way anyway, that we were supposed to send them first, um, before they were incurred. So, yes, if we need, if, if there is a, a financial policy of a school system that, I guess, we need to vote on that next one. And also for the county general?
You mean when the new budget comes forward?
Or, I guess, any time.
Let me, if I could, just, of, of practical nature, there's expenditures that are gonna happen, uh, in case of the payroll primarily, they're going to happen, and they'll happen oftentimes before we can bring that to your attention. Uh, the payroll will not stop under any circumstances, it just puts us, we're gonna be violating, if there was a policy statement that said that it hadn't improved prior to it happening, I can tell you right now, as a practical matter, we would always be in violation of that as a policy. Uh, if there was a policy statement that requested, uh, amendments that you have knowledge of to be brought to you on a weekly basis, or if you want it on a monthly basis, or whatever else, um, we could comply with that, but I can guarantee you, on a case-by-case basis, that we won't have already obligated or spent, especially in the case of payroll as it occurred. Most, most of the time, we would be able to, but I can't tell you a hundred percent of the times that that would be the case.
Um, I'm kind of hearing in the background that we may not have the authority to make those policy changes.
That's what I think, because just through the normal operation of business, sometimes expenses are incurred, where it would take a month or so to get that passed by this body.
I, I still, I still think it's important that we look at any of the budget overruns and approve them before they're incurred. Now, as far as payroll, do you not have like a projection on that?
Absolutely, and again, regardless whether you have a policy or not, based on your wishes being made known, I have no problem with doing that on our own. I mean, if that's, if that's what you like, I, it's not a problem, and we're more than willing to comply with that request.
I, I think, too, we need to keep in mind that a budget is a budget, it's not, it's a guide to go by.
It's a roadmap, it's not finite, I mean, it's, it's not exact science. I mean, you're making estimates on revenues as well as expenditure, just like we did this year with utilities and fuel. You know, you do your best estimates based on historical data, and then if something goes awry in the economy, it, like the sale tax, for example, on the revenue side, uh, or the federal impact date, where there was appropriations of a significant dollar amount prior year, and the fed government says you can't identify this in the running, but we can't guarantee it's gonna happen in this timeframe. So there's, there's a lot of unknowns. We, we are generally in the ballpark, as you well know, but to say that it's an exact science, and that, you know, there's not gonna be bumps in the road, or things that are gonna change, uh, that we have to respond to. But again, we're, we're more than willing to respond with your request, to bring it in a more timely fashion, rather than, again, the history of the past was, you bring them in the spring, and that's what we've done. And now that we're hearing that you'd like to see them on a more regular basis, we don't have any problem with that either.
No, I mean, I understand that a budget is definitely a moving... I mean, I understand that a budget is definitely a moving target. But my point in even bringing this up is that I do think we need to look at these expenditures beforehand and approve those.
And we're going to try.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Millet?
Well, thank you, Mayor Bryant. Oh, that was my question, was it's not always possible, is it, Danny?
No, ma'am, it's not.
You will have.
Most of the time, I think we, yes, I think we could comply with that despite doing it on a quarterly basis. I just can't say that 100% of the time, if a policy said this can't occur until it's approved. But obviously, we also have to take it to the school board. And it's just going to be, you know, a time lag or a process for the time to identify, you know, the issues, especially like in the case of fuel. And it's going to happen.
That's true in every budget. But I don't think it's really possible for the general fund or the students to tell us ahead of time, every time. But I think a quarter maybe would be nice and helpful. But I don't think we need to nail it down and say that you are the general fund, you've got to tell us before. Because I just don't think it can happen every time.
With extraordinary error.
Ms. Martin wants to speak, she'll ask me names.
Well, I agree, and we have been bringing in amendments on a quarterly basis. Because we have, it's by state statute, we have our, the county coroner, we have no control over when they order alcohol. Even by state statute, we have to pay for all of them. And there's, the work's already been done before we know about it. If somebody in the jail has aneurysm, goes to the hospital, we have no control over that. That throws us way over the edge and we can't control those type things. Papa burials, those are taken care of before we're aware of them. And by state statute, we have to cover those. So there's a lot of things that we can bring in and we try to bring those on a quarterly basis. But there's just some things that we can't. And a lot of that happens by state statute because we are required to cover all medical expenses for inmates and those type things.
I think the point you're talking about payroll, you can have a teacher that's, Senority, while he has experience in sick leave and emergency curve, maybe he has a heart attack or whatever, you've got a high still of a long-term sub, so he has to pay that sub. And those are things that he can't bring to you in advance. Okay, Commissioner Rankin?
I don't mind changing my amendment to say on a quarterly basis. Because I just, I just don't want to wait until the end of the year to see these big budgets.
I think it's helping bring us forward on a quarterly basis this year.
So ours this year is the cruel power, we're doing, we're trying to, the cruel power. We've got one full payroll cycle of that. We have to budget, pull back in line to budget for this year that we didn't budget for. Because by state statute, we've got to be on accrual and payroll in the year that the labor happened, not the year that we cut the check. And that's why ours is so large, because we try to take money from personnel services and contract services and cover that rather than dip it into our fund balance. And we were able to successfully do that, but it made our amendment look so large.
I'll go ahead and change my amendment to quarterly.
Okay, who's seconded that, was it Commissioner Albert? That's it?
Edelman, I think.
Edelman, okay. Commissioner Edelman, would you agree to change that to quarterly as well? Okay, all right, so we've changed the amendment to bring budget amendments forward on a quarterly basis.
Again, I'm assuming that's as needed, if there is not known need for an amendment at that particular quarter, we wouldn't submit something if there were no changes.
Right, no amendments, no changes?
Yeah.
No motion or no resolution?
Are you still wanting to bring this as an amendment to these resolutions this time or are you ready to policy change?
I don't think we can do the policy change. I'm going to leave it as an amendment.
Okay, all right. Any other comments on this amendment to these resolutions, to all the resolutions?
I'll wait on 6 if you want me to.
Or we could just go on and amend it right now if you want to.
That's what you want to do, if you're going to do the same thing?
Yes, yes, that's fine. Then 1 through?
Is that okay with you, Commissioner Edelman?
1 through 6.
I don't know really what effect it's going to have because it's going to be tied to these resolutions. You see what I'm saying?
I wanted it to say in the future.
In the future.
From now on.
Okay.
One order.
Okay.
Number 6 is not on the floor yet, so it can't be amended.
That's true.
We'll just wait till.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions or comments on the amendments to these resolutions, 1 through 5? Are you ready to vote on the amendment? Commissioners, please cast your votes on the amendment to resolution 08-6-1 through 08-6-5, adding that budget amendments would be brought forward in the future on a quarterly basis. Please cast your votes. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Clerk, please tally the votes.
We have 12 ayes, there are extensions, 8 noes.
Okay, the amendment passes. Okay, now we have an amendment on those resolutions to, are you ready to vote on the amended resolutions as an entire group? 08-6-1 through 08-6-5. Okay, question, question's been called for. We're voting on the amended resolutions as a group. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Clerk, please tally the votes.
We have 18 ayes, there are extensions, 2 noes.
Amendment resolution passes, thank you. All right, now we've come forward with resolution 08-6-6, resolution to amend the budgets of the various funds for fiscal year 2008 in certain areas of county revenues and expenditures. We have motion to bring this resolution to the floor. Commissioner Harrison makes the motion, will I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Millet. Discussion. Commissioner Rankin?
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. I would like to present the same amendment to resolution 8-6-6, that from now on, the budget amendments be brought to the budget committee and the county commission on a quarterly basis as needed.
Motion has been made to amend the resolution to ask that the future amendments to county budget be brought forward on a quarterly basis. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Edelman, any further discussion? Okay, commissioners, please cast your votes on the amendment to resolution 08-6-6 to add that in the future, budget amendments would be brought forward on a quarterly basis. And I believe we have been doing that this year. Would any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 13 ayes, there are extensions, 7 noes.
Amendment resolution passes. All right, now we'll be voting on the amended resolution 08-6-6. The amendment for the county general of revenues and expenditures with the amendment that would be brought forward on a quarterly basis in the future. Commissioners, please, are you ready for a question or do you have any further discussion? Ready? All right, commissioners, please cast your votes on the amended resolution 08-6-6. Any commissioner like to change their vote? Mr. Miles? Any commissioner like to change their vote? Clerk, please tally the votes.
We have 18 ayes, there are extensions, 2 noes.
Amendment resolution passes, thank you. Okay, that's the end of our resolutions this evening. We have some reports for you. Reports, okay. Clerk's report. Okay, we have county clerk's report, June 9, 2008. Clerk, do you need to read your report for us?
This is Kellyanne Jackson, county clerk, Montgomery County, Tennessee. We're sending the county clerk's report for the month of May 2008, which includes applications for NUTA public positions and bonds and notes of following by NUTAs and deputy officials. We hereby request that the person's name on the list of new applicants to the office of NUTA public be elected, that the oaths of deputy officials be accepted, the bonds of following applicants to the office of NUTA public and deputy sheriff be accepted, and their oaths therefore be apprenticed taken. This report shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of County Commissioners. The oaths for the deputy sheriff, R. Patrick W. Allen, Charles H. Botts, Matthew W. Robbs, Betty J. Nicholson, Deborah P. Cranny, Kristen L. Dutton. Do you not have any personal sureties on the office of NUTA public? If you did receive those applications, for that application list, class Monday.
Okay, commissioners, please cast your votes to approve the clerk's report.
I need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion, I'm sorry. I keep thinking we don't need a motion. I need a motion. Commissioner Albert makes the motion, seconded by Commissioner Miles. Please cast your votes to approve or disapprove the clerk's report. All right, clerk, please tally the votes.
We have 20 ayes, there are extensions, 0 noes.
The clerk's report's approved. All right, next we have the nominating committee's report. I'll call on Commissioner Miles to give that report.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. The nominating committee would like to involve the members of the commission if they wish in some of the situations or people to fill vacancies on the boards and committees and so forth. And what we would like to do is just give you a heads up on which positions are coming up, what vacancies need to be filled, so that if you have somebody in mind, if you know a qualified person to recommend for any of these positions, that you could just notify any member of the nominating committee. And we would consider that possible. So I know that everybody has access to this information, but you kind of have to dig it out. And so we're just trying to make it easy for everyone to participate. So kind of our next meeting, the positions that we will be trying to fill are as follows. We need one person on the economic and community development board. We need one person on the health, education, and housing facility board. We will be recommending somebody for the industrial development board. And we will be recommending two people for the legislator for the YSL committee. And we will be recommending one person for the zoning deal board. I realize that the commission as a whole votes on all these. But if you just invite the nominating committee to look over or think about somebody that you have in mind, just let somebody know on the committee, you'll try to, I mean, it's to you ahead of time. This takes us through August, I don't know. So try to do this every time. And also, I would like to have the members of the nominating committee just to stop by over here at the meeting desk. We're not having any, we're not transacting anything, we're keeping business, just to pick a date for our next meeting. We can do that, if you all nominate and give the meetings over to stop by.
Thank you. All right, we've got reports, we've got school systems.
Thank you, Mayor Bowers. I have a quick question for Commissioner Miles. On these appointments to these boards, do these people have to be commissioners or just other people in the community?
Just looking at your board, underdogs in particular, because some of them, they don't have requirements. So, and sometimes there's a demand to come from certain parts of the county that you're just having to look at, talk about, just see it. Thank you.
All right. You have, let's see, the reports that you have, you have a school system's quarterly report. You have the May 2008 adequate facilities, tax and permit revenue report. You have the accounts and budgets year-to-date report, trustees report, projects and facilities. I'm going to ask Mr. Lake Aker if he will come forward and talk to you. We've got some exciting things going on, our projects, and I want him, he's doing an excellent job with us overseeing our projects and facilities. And I want to ask him to come forward and just tell you some of the things that he's reporting. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. We have four projects that are ongoing at this time. We have several that are coming up. And the last one we closed out to the animal control and the on-site clinic. I'll start with DHS. The renovations, we're in phase two of three-phase process. And we are right on schedule with it, we're right on budget with it, everything's staying in line. In this area, we're finishing up, part of DHS area is complete. We're finishing up that part. And once the second part is done, we can start with the civic hall. And in the process of getting all the colors and things together for that. Montgomery County park situation, we're excited about that, there's a lot going on. We've got two different architects involved, one's doing St. Bethlehem, one's doing Woodlong. And they are coming up with some great ideas. We're going to be talking to the communities and seeing what they need. We're looking at land, trying to find some land south of the river. There's two or three places we're looking at, and I found another spot or two in the last few days. So that will really be a help for different places. When the cleaning and fire suppression system, at this time, the bottles were supposed to be delivered on the 3rd, with the nozzle being delivered on the 17th. This is an engineered system that is from a green chemical. It is a safe chemical, that if it wasn't going off, it protects electronics, paperwork. We have the evidence room, and it's a public safety building, the computer room's here at the plaza. And this is a very neat system, it's engineered, it takes a little while to design it. And these nozzles are certain, they're, it's laid in a certain way, and it's progressing very well. The EMS station 29, since the weather has gotten better, they are going along very well in the painting. In the EMS station, the fire station, which was started second, is about to catch up to it. Because of the good weather, they're able to do a lot more. The drywall was completed in building one, the painting, ceiling grids are installed, the doors are in. And we're really going to be able to produce help. This will provide a safe place in case of an emergency or a disaster. This building is designed to house, feed, we have a kitchen out of it. And it will be able to support the community for a long time to come.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. Mr. Aker's doing an excellent job, and I want to point out one thing that he's really focusing on is change orders. To eliminate change orders in projects and making the contractors stick to what they say they're supposed to do. So I think he's going to save some dollars in the long run. Thank you very much, appreciate it. One thing I want to apologize, I didn't have the handouts in my pack, but I got the right order. So I skipped over the county mayor nominations and county mayor appointments, so let me go back to that. County mayor nominations, we have nomination to the conservation board, Mike Harris. Now, that's not the regular schools, Mike Harris. Is nominated to replace Betty Barnett for a five-year term to expire April 2013. Judicial commissioner Catherine Powers is elected to serve another one-year term to expire 2009. Library board Joe Frit is eligible to serve another three-year term to expire June 30th, 2011. Kathy Stafford is eligible to serve another three-year term to expire June 30th, 2011. Jane Ellison is eligible to serve another three-year term to expire June 30th, 2011. Ann Ross is nominated to replace Thayer Beach for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2011. So I guess I need a second to bring forward the county mayor nominations for approval. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Miles, thank you. Okay, commissioners, will you please cast your votes on approving the county mayor's nominations for June 9, 2008? Any commissioner like to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 20 ayes, there are extensions, 0 noes.
Okay, nominations stand approved, thank you. All right, next we have the county mayor appointments, June 9, 2008. Convention and visitors bureau, this is a joint appointment with the city of Clarksville mayor. Brad Martin is reappointed to serve a three-year term to expire June 2011. Tino Grubbs is appointed to replace Noel Boyd for a three-year term to expire June 2011. Economic Development Council, Charles Keen is appointed to replace Loretta Bryant as a county commissioner appointee for a two-year term to expire June 2010. Those are the county mayor appointments. Okay. All right, announcements, I just wanted to remind you again that we changed the date on the July meeting. The informal meeting will be July 14th, it's been moved up one week. And the formal meeting will be July 21st to pass the budget call. And the formal meeting will be July twenty-first to pass the budget hopefully. So we need an extra week to prepare for that. So we should be able to meet the deadlines. Is there any further business to come before this body of the state? Commissioner Van Esack?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a prepared statement to read.
Okay.
Even though the mayor and I have spoken, I am extremely frustrated by the decision to move the July meetings to the second and third Mondays of July. As a commissioner, I make plans based on the norm that the meetings will be on the first and the second Mondays except when holidays aren't planned. Using these norms, I have made plans to meet the twenty-first that are unchanging. Due to this recent decision to move the meetings away from the norm, residents of District Twenty will not have a vote in the two thousand and eight oh nine budget entatling. Finally, I applaud the budget committee for all of its hard work of preparing the upcoming budget. However, due to the shift away from our normal schedule, I am frustrated that I will not have the opportunity to vote on it. Thank you.
And we did discuss it. And I explained to Commissioner Van Esack that since we had a lot of cuts coming from the state, you know, financial short hauls, that it had resulted in a lot of budget changes. And since then too, we've even found the reason grants that will be fulfilled. So it has required us to go back and make cuts in our budget as a result of that. So it's just something that's been unavoidable this year and I appreciate your patience. And I'm sorry about your frustration, your little frustration. I do have a letter that was placed on your desk this evening concerning cancellation of Captain's Projects Tours that Mike Harris, Director of Schools, placed there for you to read. Did you take a look at that? I hope you did read it. Okay? Any further business to come before this body of the state? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Commissioner Miles, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All in favor, say aye. And we'll ask Chief Patterson to adjourn us.
All right. Oh, yes, oh, yes, it's on the board of the county commissioners, now stands adjourn. God save the state, it's on the board of commissioners.
Thank you.